Good evening. I will now call to order the Clark County School Board June 19, 2023, regular meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic with its strength, one nation, under God.
Any questions about tonight's agenda?
I would move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Approval of consent agenda. We have monthly finance reports, overnight field trips, fundraising and use of facilities request, approval of donations, approval of V S B A policy services agreement, approval of Title I, Part A, Title II, Title III, and Title IV applications, and approval of minutes from the May 22 and May 30 meeting. Any questions about tonight's consent agenda?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Recognition of girls and boys soccer?
Yes, so we've had an incredible year here in Clark County in a lot of ways, but our athletic teams have done extremely well during the course of the year, and that was closed out this, just a week or so ago, by our boys and girls soccer teams who represented our community, their families and themselves incredibly well in Salem. First, I know that it's a little bit difficult to get people here. People are on vacation. This is not the best time to recognize, but we don't want to let too much time pass. So Coach Casey, members of the boys soccer team, you guys want to come forward? Do you have anybody?
We don't have any boys here today.
Okay. Patrick, you want to introduce your assistant coaches at least?
Yeah, definitely. We've got Tom Allison here. He's our assistant coach, and then Mark Herman is our goalkeeper coach.
So these guys put in an incredible amount of time. Guess Coach Casey's been our boys varsity coach for four, five years now? Seven? Oh, time flies when you're having fun, right, Patrick? So, okay, yeah, time does fly. Seven years. And the stability that's in the program under his leadership with assistant coaches that have been around for several years now, too. We just continue to have this pipeline of great soccer players and great coaching. And I know the season didn't end the way that they wanted it to, but it was still a great season, and we have a lot to be proud of with the way these young people and our coaches represented our community. So thank you very much for all that you did this spring, for all that you do in the offseason to work with our student athletes, and for doing things the right way. We appreciate that. You know, and second place in the state isn't bad. Our girls team brought home the gold for, I guess, the second time in the last three seasons. I know I see several members of our girls team here. Coach Hawkins is out of town, but Coach Franz is here. Coach Franz, you and the girls want to come forward? Just kind of come up here to the front? Yeah, don't be shy now. You never are. We don't have any concession food tonight, Coach Franz. Bobby and I have this running joke about concession stands. So we don't have all of them. How about right behind the podium facing the board? There we go. So, once again, these young ladies, just a fraction of the ones that are on the team, represented our community in a great way. We're seeing them under much different circumstances than we did last year, which is very positive. I think the team this year, a lot of returning players. Audrey was one of the few seniors on the team, provided great leadership to the group throughout the year. Just introduce yourselves really quickly for those in the audience that don't know who you are, and some of our board members maybe.
I'm Madison Tune.
Yeah.
Oh, can you tell us your grade? Sorry.
Eleven, junior year.
Oh, wait. They're seniors now. Madison, you're finished. You're a senior now.
I'm Ella, college.
University of Tennessee. No? Kentucky. Oh, wow. Don't want to make that mistake.
I'm Danielle, senior. I'm a freshman. Campbell, I'm a senior.
Coach Franz, our assistant coach, has been around with us for a couple of years now. Some of these girls did receive quite a few accolades, and I'll also go through the boys here toward the end. All district, Kelsey, Elrod, Somertune, Madison Tune, Lily Sewling, and Audrey Price. Second team, all district, Leah Mitchell, Olivia Marisi, Campbell Nyman, Ella O'Donnell. All region team, Madison, Summer, Kelsey, Lily, and Audrey. Second team, Leah, Olivia, Campbell, and Ella. And then our all-state teams were just announced. For girls, we had, let me find, Summer Tune, Madison Tune, Lily Sewling, Audrey Price, and Kelsey Elrod were all first team. Our second team, folks, we didn't have any. And Madison Tune was also named Player of the Year in the state. And Coach Hawkins, Coach Hawkins was the Coach of the Year for two A girls soccer. So girls, thank you so much for representing our community the way you did. We're very proud of you. Those of you who are juniors or coming back next year, or now seniors coming back next year, no pressure at all to repeat, and I look forward to seeing you play next year some, too, as a retired superintendent. So thank you. I don't want to go without mentioning the boys' accolades as well. All district, Oakley Staples, Leo Morris, Cal Beckett, Charlie Frame, Ben Fulmer, Joe Zerker, Brody Murphy. Second team, Chris LeBlanc, Jackson Ellis. Region first team, Leo, Chris, Cal, Charlie, Ben, Joe, and Brody. Second team was Oakley and Jackson. And then our all-state boys, we had several. Leo Morris, Cal Beckett, Charlie Frame, Joe Zerker, Ben Fulmer, Chris LeBlanc. And then second team, we had Brody Murphy. So lots of individual accolades as well as team accolades, and certainly a long season, a very productive season this spring. So thank you for everything you did.
Congratulations, girls. Great.
Can we say stuff there real quick?
Oh, yes, Jason.
Okay. Does anybody else want to say anything?
Go ahead. So congratulations to both of our soccer programs. The day that I get emotional talking about it, because I'm happy for you all. So the day that both of your teams were playing in the finals, I can assure you that our community was swirling with like text messages and posts and asking for updates, you know. While I was at a basketball tournament, I was texting a parent saying, what's the score? What's, you know, just, we were really happy for you. So this is kind of a funny story. My brother, who's super cheap, plays with Coach Elliston, or played with Coach Elliston when he was in high school as well, signed up to stream your high school, your games, so the semifinals and then the finals. And I want you to know that he did not stream or use the Virginia High School League streaming service for any of his nephew's basketball games this season. So it was specifically for you all. And it's been an emotional year with you guys, so I just feel happy for you all. But I also want to share, too, that, like, we were at a retirement dinner for my husband's accounting firm this weekend, and a colleague of his, whose son, I think, plays for James, no, he's going to play for Sharando next year, like, point blank looks across the table at my husband in the middle of dinner and is like, what are you all doing in Clark County to make soccer so successful? And it was like, really, tell me, because I want my child to have the opportunity to have a state championship like you guys. And so I didn't, like, obviously, like, say, well, let me tell you exactly, you know, how the kids got here. But I wanted to say that, I don't know why I'm so emotional, that, you know, because of the commitment from your families, like, from your parents and taking you guys to so many tournaments far, far away and making the financial commitment to getting you guys where you are is phenomenal. But it's also things like Clark County youth soccer, which I have pictures of you guys playing soccer with my kids when you all were like five and six. So it really, it truly is a community effort, and it's just awesome to see it come together. You know, the commitment from you all and your perseverance to fight through a really, really difficult spring and summer and kind of like six months to nine months to a year of a struggle. So, and I think that that's what sports teaches us, hopefully, is that, you know, you can have your very best day, one day, and then like, two days later, your worst day. And I think about, you know, the girls' basketball team and their experience, you know, winning a state championship and the loss of someone who's very, very special to our community within days of each other. And so I think that, you know, it's just, it's a true testament to our community and to your families, and then also to you all as teammates and to the relationships that you form with your coaches. So I'm just, I'm very proud of you all, and I'm happy that some of the seniors came back who didn't really want to, and you did, and you were successful. And I think that that courage is going to take you so far as you, you know, try new things next year as whatever it is that you decide to do. So I'm very proud of you. That's it. Thank you for putting up with the emotion.
Town of Berryville proposal. Do you want to?
Mr. Dalton is here this evening. He's our town manager here in Berryville, who would present a proposal to the board related to some boundary line adjustments on the west side of the Clark County High School site. That proposal is attached for your review, or you've had opportunity to review that over the last several days. This is kind of step one in the process. I'm sure Keith will mention that, but, Mr. Dalton?
I cleared the room for you. It's pretty good. I have a knack.
Talk boundary line adjustments.
That's right. See, I find this stuff exciting, people. Thank you for having me. My name is Keith Dalton, and I'm the town manager of the town of Berryville. And I suppose we could file this, what we're talking about, under, we really don't get in a hurry in Clark County. The history of this dates back to the construction of the high school. What happened when the high school was constructed, the Mosby was completed, and the schools, you all, dedicated the right-of-way for Mosby Boulevard. It was dedicated, it wasn't dedicated, it was actually provided as an easement, but that's beside the point. But what happened in that is, is there is, can we scroll to the maps? What happened is some property became, go to the one back one. There we go. That's it. The property that's shown in pink was stranded on the other side of Mosby. That is school board property. And then the property that you see in blue was actually a fee simple strip of land that served as access to our public worksite from 1923 until 2012. And now our access comes off of Mosby Boulevard, so that isn't needed. The part that you see in green, we'll talk about, well, I guess while we're here, we'll talk about it, that's property that we are looking to acquire from Mr. Paul Howell. The property that you see at the top is owned by Howell. The top, the blue is owned by the town. The pink or red is owned by the schools. What we're looking to do is transfer the pink and the blue to Mr. Howell. The green would go to the town of Berryville, would expand the site. Then if we move to the next slide, this is moving generally in a northerly direction. We are looking for this piece of property that you see in orange to be transferred from the schools to the town of Berryville. And then if we move to the next slide, and we're moving north again, that property would be transferred from the town of Berryville to the Clark County Public Schools. The, and maybe it's best to go back to the first, because that's really, I guess, the reason that we're here. This, we began talking about this fairly soon after the site, the school was constructed, and what we wanted to do was to get this cleaned up, not have the residual parcel that the school owns on that west side of the road. It doesn't make any sense for that stem, pipe stem, that the town owns to remain there. It doesn't set the stage for orderly development of that property, which I think would be beneficial to the entire community. So what we started doing was talking about basically a way to trade some property, do boundary line adjustments, with the goal to provide for orderly development, to make sure that each party was made as whole as possible. If you look at, I guess, go back if you may, back, back, not forward, yeah, back. Let's go, keep going. There we go, in that whole section. All right. So this ultimately, the summary is that, and I guess the most important, we can just go up a little bit, is what, I'm sorry, down. There we go. The blue is what we would be dealing with from the schools, and that is that there would be, into the schools would be 12,572 square feet from the town of Berryville. That's that area to the north that we talked about. And out from the schools would be 8,000 square feet and change to Howell and 4,565 square feet to the town of Berryville. So as you can see, that's a wash. So that was the intent. What we are hoping to do is if you all would be so kind as to put this on your agenda for a public hearing in August, and we would like to do it sooner, but we just didn't get the Platts that we needed. But we're, I got something tonight, and Chuck has it. It's not ready for primetime. We'll go over it and have to make some changes. But what we will need to put in front of you, I think, before you all are willing to set a public hearing, would be Platts and deeds. So what happens through this process is that for a boundary line adjustment to be approved, the Berryville Area Development Authority, which is the, it is the planning commission for our annexation area, they would approve boundary line adjustments. They're basically moving the adjustments around, and then there would be a deed associated with that that would then actually transfer the property. Not that it's particularly important to you all, but there are going to also be some easements that have to be established across Howell. There are a series of water lines through there that'll have to have easements established. But that's the nuts and bolts of it. There is a schedule there. At the end, we would like to have this finished by the end of the year. So you all are kind of up first. Mr. Howell is in agreement. He hasn't signed off yet, but he wants to stand. It is his surveyor who is providing the survey Platts and the situation. The town, of course, will kind of, once you all, if you all do agree to the boundary line adjustments, then the town will pursue that a little bit further. I guess the only other nuance that I didn't bring up, and that is there are some rezonings associated with this as well. The, if we go back to the maps real quick, okay, we can start. So you will see that the property, the blue property is zoned ITL, and Howell property is zoned ITL, so there are no changes there needed. The Clark County Public School property is zoned ITL, so there are no zoning changes that need to be. The green area is zoned ITL, and the town's property is zoned ITL, so nothing has to happen there as far as rezoning. If you can go to the next.
What does ITL mean?
Institutional. It is basically that whole bit between Business 7 and Bypass 7 on the west side is ITL. The only other section is just south of Josephine Street where Josephine, the Johnson Williams Apartments are located.
Okay.
So it only exists in two places in the annexation area. Now, this area, which is in town, there are other areas actually in the county, which makes it even more complicated, but this area is in town, and it is zoned, with the school property, it is zoned DR4. And if we were to get it, we would want to have it rezoned to ITL, so it would match our site. And then if we go to the next slide, then that property, which would be town property that is transferred to the schools, is presently zoned ITL, and it would be rezoned to DR4, so it would match the rest of your zoning. And that's it in a nutshell.
That piece of property across, in the presentation piece here, is across the road, across Mosby from the high school, where that strip of, there's a clear-cut strip in there. It's right in that area, general area.
Yeah, it's fairly near where the stormwater management area was built for Mosby.
Are you willing to take us on a field trip?
Absolutely.
I'd like to, it's hard to visualize it from this map.
I'd be more than glad to do it with, to take the entire board, if you all want to convene in that fashion, or to take individual members. That'd be great. Just call me.
So what you're proposing is that we would set a public hearing at our July meeting for August?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So tonight, it's just information?
Just to bring you up to speed, and I think that your suggestion is a good one. And after you all look at it, you may have some questions. And again, I'm not sure what your all's protocol is, but if it's fine, call me.
Okay.
And we can go see it and talk about it. I think, and again, it's kind of funny, because we had talked about getting this done 12 years ago, and it just didn't work out. We just, everybody got focused on other things. And it works out well, because we just acquired this land that you see in yellow. We acquired it about a year and a half ago. So one of the downsides of this always was the school was going to end up being a loser by some amount of square feet. And by us getting this, we're able now to be in a position where we can make you all whole.
Any questions for Mr. Dalton? Nope. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in July.
Thank you.
Sorry?
See you in July.
See you in July. That's right.
Take care.
Okay, superintendents update.
Yeah, just four items for this evening. We are proud to report that 100% of our students in our nursing program recently passed the CNA exam. That's no easy task due to a lack of enrollment. And also, staffing, we will not offer summer school this year at any level, including those high school four-credit courses that we've offered in the past. We did apply for and have been awarded an opportunity to participate in the Wolf Trap Institute for Early Learning Through the Arts. Pre-K staff will receive one professional development workshop and one parent engagement workshop as part of the program. So that will be in place next year at some point. On June 9, we did receive correspondence from the Department of Education, Office of Special Ed, that we are in compliance with special ed requirements and do not require any onsite monitoring or targeted technical assistance. So that's always a good thing. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Bishop? This is your last time to ask him for superintendent update. You can make up one.
Do we know what the graduation rate was this year for the high school?
Do not know at this point, because the official numbers have not been reported to DOE. Those aren't actually reported until the summer. So early next fall, as part of the accreditation process, that number will be formalized.
Anything else? Okay. Audience comments. Audience comments are limited to three minutes. Anybody wishing to speak should fill out a card with the clerk, Ms. Weir. Nope. Would anybody like to speak? Nope. Okay. All righty. Consideration of acting superintendent designation. So at our May 30, 2023 meeting, the board voted unanimously for Rick Catlett to serve as a superintendent for the school division effective July 1, 2023. As I understand it, in order for Mr. Catlett's application for certification as eligible by the Virginia Board of Education to be presented to the Board of Education for approval, a record of the school board's vote needed to be provided to the V DOE. Having taken the vote and notified V DOE of the vote, Mr. Catlett's application is now pending and will be considered by the Board of Education. Once certified eligible, Mr. Catlett can assume office as the newly appointed Division Superintendent for CCPS. Between July 1, 2023, and the Board of Education certification, the school board needs to designate an acting superintendent. To that end, the school board needs to clarify its intent regarding Mr. Catlett's appointment and certification. May I have a motion, please?
Yes. I would like to clarify the earlier motion taken at our May 30, 2023 meeting, specifically that Mr. Catlett be designated acting superintendent effective July 1, 2023. Until such time as he is certified eligible, at which time he will assume the office as Clark County Public Schools newly appointed Division Superintendent. Clark County Public Schools newly appointed division superintendent.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Catlett, don't go anywhere before then, please. Okay. The policy committee met on June 9th, 2023, and recommended the following policies to be presented to the school board for first and second reading. You can see them all listed. I will not go through them. A lot of these updates were really just regular VSBA updates, so nothing, nothing of huge significance. Any questions about any of these? May I have a motion?
I move to approve the policies and regulations for first and second reading.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just one, one, one thing.
Yep.
And, and I don't think it should hold up our, our approval of these, but in, in the future, as we go through these, these policies with the updates, some of them have hard and fast numbers associated with them. I think it's 10,000 contracts for, for the anti-discrimination. But, but that was set in 2012, so it would probably be helpful to, to, to move the number with inflation, so that we're not kind of working on, you know, unrealistic numbers for the time that we're in, in the future. Does that make sense? Adjust it for inflation.
Yeah.
There's a motion, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Consideration of meal prices for 23 and 24?
Each year, the school division has to set meal prices for both elementary lunch and breakfast, secondary lunch and breakfast, as well as adult prices. The reduced price lunch and breakfast does not change from year to year. There's a formula that you plug numbers into, and then it tells you how much you can increase meals to keep you on track for closing the gap between what a paid meal from the federal government is versus a paid meal at the cash register, if that makes any sense. So Renee has run the numbers through the food service template, and the proposed meal prices have gone up a dime from one year to the next. And that keeps us in alignment moving forward, so that you don't have to raise prices significantly in one year. So the, the prices that are, are projec, are listed here are what is, what are proposed for next year.
Any questions? May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2023-24 meal prices as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Consideration of building services agreement with the Clark County government?
As part of the budget process, we had in there some consideration for moving to in-house custodial services effective July 1, 2023. We did go out and rebid those, or issued an RFP for services. And as we anticipated, the number was significantly higher than we were currently paying. The number's still high. Saw about a 20% increase overall in, in the cost. We met today, talked through how that would be covered under the, the adopted budget. All told, there would be 20 custodial employees assigned to Clark, or Clark County would employ 20 custodial employees. Two of those would be assigned to Clark County government. We have formalized, Mr. Boyce actually put together the MOU that you have attached, the custodial agreement, and the county would pay 12% of the total cost. That would cover their two employees, any materials and supplies that were used, those kind of benefits, et cetera. 12% is actually the percentage of square foot, square footage that the county government would have skin in the game with this particular proposal. When you look at all of our building square footages, the Government Center square footage, it ends up being 12%. So we've talked about how that would happen, whether the schools would invoice, or whether Ms. Bennett would basically do an adjustment in the budget and just charge the county for their 12%. But the agreement has been formalized and is awaiting signature of Ms. Singh Smith.
Are the two that are going to be working for the Government Center full-time, they're still our employees?
Our employees, basically subcontracted.
So if they have kids with the school system, they'll still be able to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions? May I have a motion?
I move to approve the county school custodial agreement as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? School board member comments, Mr. Shute?
Well, it's a big night. It's Dr. Bishop's last night, sitting here. And I thoroughly enjoyed working with him for nine years. I think I'm repeating myself, but somebody said, what'd you, what'd you do while you were on the school board? And one of my things would be, I was part of the team that hired Dr. Bishop. And he was, he was a manager first, I think. And hey, due to a series of circumstances, there was a lot of cleaning up to be done in our paperwork and our policies, and not the most exciting work. But we just churned through it. I don't know what it'd take, a year and a half, two years to get caught up. And at the same time, many, many things have been accomplished, not the least of which was the renovation of this building, of the school. And it's just been, for me, it's been, and I, I don't want to leave out the much, much improved relationship between our board and the Board of Supervisors. And I lay a lot of that at Chuck's feet. He put tremendous effort into all that. So I hate to see him go. But one thing, when you have a good general, he always trains a good second in command. And I'm really enthusiastic about Rick taking over. And so, all I can say is the best of luck. I hope it's a wonderful, wonderful change for you. So that's all I got to say.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'll repeat myself as well. Chuck, I've said this from the beginning, as we've gotten to know each other in the short time, I've got nothing but respect for you. And the more I've gotten to know you, the more I respect. So I appreciate that. I look forward to continuing the relationship in a different capacity. And wish you nothing but luck. I know you're going to do well, and continue to do well. Appreciate everything you've done for the community and the, the district, having children here for, you know, for the past 11 years. You know, I've seen the improvements and sincerely appreciate the hard work you've put in. Rick, you as well. It was a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned, is, you know, you take on this new role, and I look forward to working with you and, and seeing that continued culture as we move forward. That's all I have.
Mr. Turkell?
Dr. Bishop. The subject of so many comments tonight. It, it really has been a pleasure. You know, I, I have said before, you're the consummate professional. And as I think about some of the metrics for me that, that I associate with you, it's, it's interesting that the things you kind of take for granted, like what Chip was talking about with the relationship with the, between the county and the school system. And certainly, counties around us don't, don't have that, and we haven't had that in the past. And that's something that, you know, that, 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 you know, we can, we can appreciate. I think another thing is the idea of our role, or my role, as, as someone who's tasked with providing oversight of, of the superintendent. And, and when you have a superintendent that, that, you know, that, that puts out well-reasoned and, and well-thought-out pathways for the system to move in, it, it makes it, it makes it really that much better and easier to do that oversight, because, because it, it, you know, it makes sense, and it's, it seems to be, to have been in alignment with, with what our, our community is, is aspiring to. So thank you for your service, thank you for your time, look forward to seeing you in the future.
Mr. Hoibert? So this, this morning, when I saw you at, at the basketball camp, as the kids were coming in, I, I felt like, okay, we're going to be okay, because he's not completely leaving us, and you're still going to be around. But it's, it is a closing of a chapter. And you truly are leaving Clark County better, leaving Clark County as our superintendent. You're leaving us better than you found us. And I think that, you know, astoundingly, that all of our comments regarding our relationship with the Board of Supervisors is largely attributable to you and the trust that you've built. And I think trust is a really important thing right now, considering what we've gone through as a board, and, but also, you know, what our country is going through right now. And I think that that made it an easy decision for me to want to continue that, to continue on that path of trust by appointing Mr. Catlett as our next superintendent. But also, but going back to you, Dr. Bishop, you're, you're the type of leader who wouldn't ever ask anyone to do something that you wouldn't do yourself. And I think that that's probably the biggest lesson that I've, I've learned from you over the past few years. And it's, and one example of that is, actually, there's a couple. But one that comes to mind is you handing out COVID tests on Christmas Eve. And you could have asked someone else to do that, and you did it. You stepped away from your family. Yep. You know, so it's things like that, but it's also helping Mr. Rowe clean up after a basketball game, or stepping in to be the team dad for your daughter's sports. So, you know, I'm thankful that I've had this time with you. You're going to be missed terribly. You've always made me feel like I could come to you about anything regarding my kids, whether it's something that they need socially, or emotionally, or academically. But I know that, that that's not exclusive to Katie Kirhebert, and that you would do that for anyone in our community. And that's in, that's truly, we're, we're very, very fortunate to have had this time with you, and you are a treasure. You're welcome.
I can't get mushy, because I won't get through the first sentence, so I'm just going to make jokes to get through this. So, you know, there were times when I'd be like, can I come in for a meeting? And you're like, meh. And so I'm like, no, let me come in for a meeting. And the reason I wanted to come in, because I had something great to tell you, and I was gonna either, I wanted to see your face, because you either had the hell no face, or the maybe face, or great idea Monica face. And that's the one I was always looking for. I felt like it was probably the other two more than that, so we'll work on that. You didn't have to admit that, thanks so much. So, you know, I got on the board, and we know the board was a little tricky then, and you were a huge ally for me, and I appreciate that. And I attribute the board's success to you, and I also attribute my, my success as chair to you. I don't know, you kind of taught me everything I know. And then on a personal level, you were really there to support me, so I appreciate that. One of the perks of leaving, it's kind of random, you get a lifetime pass to all sporting events. Congratulations. And a guest, that's right. So we look forward to seeing you at games. You've always...
Ticket for two.
Right. We look forward to seeing you at games. Obviously, you'll be there anyway, but now you definitely don't have an excuse not to be there. So thanks for everything, really appreciate it. I don't, I can't say anymore. Okay. Do you have any, do you?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. And, you know, this is maybe a non-traditional retirement, retiring from Virginia, and then moving across the state line to West Virginia. But it has been a blessing to serve in this community. Supportive parents, community, and great kids. It's not always easy in, in this job. You know, you don't get positive phone calls about something that happened that was great. There are lots of perceptions that sometimes are hard to overcome. Communities with high expectations with respect to education are challenging, because everybody has an idea or a path that, that they've determined that their child is going to follow, and it's up to us to provide, you know, to pave the path. And, and that's hard. Then people attack decisions, they attack you personally. You know, they want to determine who your friends are, those kinds of things. So you live your life in a fishbowl. And sometimes it can be difficult on your children as well. Bailey's friends call me the Terminator. You know, so that's, that's just part of this. But just a few things. This has never been about me. You know, I always try to have a team of people. I always wanted to do what was right for kids, academics, athletics, arts. Those successes are what I'll remember the most from every community I've served, but particularly here. We do have wonderful staff in our, in our schools. And I think in a lot of ways, we've established a culture here that makes this an employer of choice. You know, a few years ago, Rick and I would come to you at budget meetings and at other times and say, another five people are leaving to go to Loudoun, another five people are leaving to go to Fairfax. Those people are now coming here, not because we pay more, not because our insurance benefits are better. I think we've established a culture here where people want to be. That's not about me, it's about the other leaders in this, in this room, it's about teaching staff and our instructional assistants and our bus drivers. We have bus drivers leaving, leaving Loudoun County to come here now. And that doesn't happen without purpose behind decisions that are made, being known for treating people the right way. Doesn't mean we don't hold them accountable, but we try to treat people the right way. You know, I walked in in 2014, and a month later, got, you know, notice from the Department of Education that we had two focus schools, and there were lots of hoops we had to jump through. But we worked collaboratively here from this office with school-based personnel at a time, and, and the Department of Ed, and that turned around really quickly. Our CTE opportunities for kids have, I don't know, I don't want to say tripled, they might, they might have quadrupled. But we have way more opportunity now for kids to explore career paths prior to going to college, or maybe deciding they're not even going to college. Our partnership with Laurel Ridge Community College was born over the last nine years. The Blue Ridge Tech Program up in Martinsburg next year was, was born the last year. Those partnerships have, we've leveraged those partnerships for the benefit of our kids. We knew we had space challenges at the high school. We can't offer everything everybody wants, but we have tried to use partnerships as a small division to make, to make it make sense. And then we have an outstanding work-based learning coordinator who's just taken the ball and has run with it. So that has, that's been a big plus for, for enhancing the academic program. We have to stop thinking about separating kids who are going to go to work and kids who are going to go to college. We hope they all go to work one day. Right? Some people take a different path to get there. So we have to stop separating those two things, and I think we've done that. The process that we have in place for the, for the annual budget didn't exist. There was no rhyme or reason to the way money was distributed, and that's not a slight to anybody, there just wasn't. We are a financially efficient school division. We weathered the pandemic together, handing out, Ann and I handing out COVID kits on Christmas Eve wasn't what we planned to do, but we did it for an hour, and it was fun. Somebody gave us a bottle of wine. We took it home, by the way, we didn't drink it here. Salary increases every year. When I got here, the starting salary in Clark was $38,000, this year it's $51,000. That doesn't happen, though, without collaboration between staff, developing a budget, school board, asking questions about... board, asking questions about that, also being committed to making improvements, and then a Board of Supervisors who sees the reasoning behind it and provides the funding. So, that's not a Chuck thing, it's not a Rick thing. We can all take pride in the fact that we have moved salaries forward, we've moved a lot of things forward, uh, and that's just one of them. And that Board of Supervisors relationship you all mentioned, this building, Chip mentioned that, uh, was just, you know, when I, when I got here in July of 14, somebody, I don't know who, told me, said, well, we're getting ready to move next door. I think there was one phone line, wasn't there, in the main office? That was it. I don't know how we, I guess we were just going to be like the payphone, we were going to run down and use the phone and come back. So, you know, we slowed, we, we slowed that train down, and, and now we have this great space. Um, our pre-K program is a model program throughout this, throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. Um, it's an idea that I brought with me that I had implemented in other places, and, and our teaching staff and Dr. Seal and others have made that come to pa- or made that a successful program here. One-to-one tech initiative, grade six to 12. That was, you know, a lot of people think that that was a result of the pandemic, that sped it up. We were moving in that direction anyway, just sped it up. So, anyway, um, they were back here joking before, and I'm not going to change. So, people better not be late for meetings. You know, if I say a meeting starts at 10, I'm talking at 10 o'clock, and if you're 10:01, then you come in and you're late. Uh, you've missed whatever I said the first 30 seconds. Renee reminded me that one of my first meetings here, somebody's cellphone went off. I took my cellphone and looked at it and put it in my pocket, and about five other people, but there's a way too. So, you know, I'm, I'm not going to change in that way, that's for sure. Um, meetings start at 10, they start at 10. Uh, but thank you for your support, and thanks to all the staff here that have, that have made my job, I don't want to say easy, have made it easier than it might have been otherwise. Uh, certainly the time here in Clark County, I will look on fondly, and I'll be around. So, anyway, that's all I got.
Did you want to say something? I do want to, I forgot to say this. I, I'm still your boss for 12 days, so that makes me... See the smile? You could see, you could see the face there. Okay, convene-
That was the good idea, Monica's smile.
That was, yeah. He dug deep for that.
There's a, there's a light in his tunnel now.
Right. Um, motion to convene to close session, please.
I'll move to convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters, including appointments, resignations pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The estimated time required for the closed session is 30 minutes, and action is expected.
Is there a second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
May I have a motion to reconvene to open session?
I move to reconvene in open session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Certification?
Okay, I'm sorry, hold on. That was Katie make that motion?
Yes. Yes. John seconded it.
Pursuant to code section 3.12d of the code for Virginia, do you certify that to best of your knowledge during the closed session just concluded, this Parkland school board dispossessing matters will all plead sent for the open meeting requirements and identify the motion for beaming the closed session. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Kehoeber?
Aye.
Mr. Schutte?
Yeah.
Ms. Singsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Tricale?
Aye.
Yeah.
Motion for action, please.
I'll move that we accept the personnel agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks everybody, we'll adjourn the meeting, we gotta take a quick photo. Was there something we missed?
No.
Oh.